You don't get that.
It's the same test, you know.
Chief, I'm gonna remember to think.
Well, chief, chief of anything isn't, isn't available anymore. Chief, anything.
We can get you that. I don't want your y'all to say, oh.
Well, I can do it for that.
You're laying there anyway. That one was a third.
I could just do it, but then take me a year. My problem is I look at shit. So, I don't need to get in it. Then I go in later in the day when the light changes. Oh, that's not quite right.
They develop early.
Good morning. I will call the November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five Norfolk Planning Commission meeting order, inform the public about the Open Meetings Act in the northwest corner of the building, and ask for a roll.
Wait.
Here.
Sock. Simonson.
Here.
Hupkey. Hoffert.
Here.
Cooby.
Here.
Griffith.
Here.
Keach.
Here.
Ronfeld.
Here.
I'd ask for approval of the full agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please vote.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
In consideration of approval of the minutes of the Norfolk, or excuse me, November fourth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please vote.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
At this time, we'll open the public hearings of, item number six and eight. The public hearing at the request of Raymond and Julie Stela to consider a zoning change from A agricultural district to I-1 light industrial district on property generally located one half mile west of intersection of sixty-first Street and Highway two seventy-five. And the same request for Raymond and Julie Stela at, and Q, excuse me, OQH Enterprises LLC to consider a zoning change from agricultural district to rural residential on property generally located one half mile west of the intersection of sixty-first Street and Highway two seventy-five. Anyone here to speak on behalf?
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
My name is Ray Stela, and basically what we're trying to do, we have about twenty-two acres west of town. That's Highway two seventy-five. We're just south of the highway. And what we'd like to do is split those two, that twenty-two acres into two separate lots. I'll let the Olsons and Kevin Vakes talk to you about what they want to do out there, but probably the, the biggest thing is the purple areas. They're gonna be zoned rural residential. Up there on, I don't know which lot, is that Lot One? Lot Two. There's already an existing home there, and we'd like to keep that home there so that we can, I don't know, preserve what's there, and then zone the rest of it light industrial. And I think there's gonna be some shops and maybe some storage units there, but I'd ask you just to consider it and, and it'd be very similar to what's out there already. We have Johansson's Greenhouse there that is a commercial application with the house on it. And we have Buck's Pumping, which is right across the highway, and, and that's storage units with a rural, with a house on it also. So, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good morning. Chuck Olson, represent OQH Enterprises. It stands for Olson Quarter Horses. That's what OQH is. We own the property on the south side, the large rectangle in the red there. Operator Arista Ranch out of there do horse training breeding program. A barn was built there for that purpose and had a hospitality suite out there that we, we use for, for the horse operation. We are looking at purchasing half of that, that south half of the property that Ray just mentioned, and utilizing that for an additional shop for equipment. My son Andrew is a new shareholder in OQH Enterprises and needs a shop for his business, and we just, we're kind of outgrowing. You know, we need to kind of separate the horse operation from all of his equipment and things like that, which, you know, consists of, you know, big vehicles and big equipment type stuff. And it's not a great idea to have that stuff sitting outside all the time. So, the idea is to have that south side of the property in yellow there as industrial so that we can put a shop out there, been in communication with Val and, and other people within the city to kind of get some guidance on how to put this together. As Ray mentioned, the purple area will, will stay as, or would like to have that house stay there. Long-term planning that was suggested was that if we ever wanted to build a home out at Arista, it would need to have a separate rural residential spot. So, we've located an area, it's a little over three acres, and thought we'd kind of try and do all of this at once. Made sense as opposed to coming back five years from now or ten years from now, because I think that's the long-term idea that we would eventually build a house out there. We wouldn't. Andrew probably would. But to be near the operation, be able to help run the horse facility and things. So, any questions?
So, the, the barn that's already there is just north of where that flag lot is of rural res, rural residential?
Yeah, where Val's highlighting there, that's where the current barn is, where Arista Ranch is. The purple area up top is where there's a home currently there.
And that, is that home occupied currently?
Yes. Yep, so Ray and Julie own that currently. The lot line that we're talking about for division purpose would be on the south side of that purple line, purple, and then go straight across east and west, and we would be looking at purchasing that south side.
There's no concern that the house sits right on that property line? Or right on that division line?
Yeah, there's, there's electrical on the south side of that line, so the line was, was, the property line, right where Val's got the cursor, right there is the property line, and there's electrical just on the, on the north side of that property line. So, we wanted to keep the, keep the line distant enough from the house. And, and the house currently is owned by Ray and rented by my son currently right now. So, no complaints.
Fair.
There's.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, there's no need for easements or anything like that?
No, that's what the flag lots are for, to make sure that there is future, I mean, they don't have to change anything the way it is right now. Everybody can still share the driveway, but plating, we are putting actual public road access to everybody, so just in case in the future people don't get along with each other, there's, there's the option.
In case it's not your son or someone else that's doing the bidding. Okay, yeah.
And the house is on a minimum three-acre lot for well and septic since we don't have water and sewer out there, so it, it's a larger lot out there for the house, too.
Okay.
Yep, so the property that we're talking about purchasing would still be in the, under OQH Enterprises. But as you can see, it butts up to the other OQH, which we were going to leave as ag.
And as far as the, so can you go back to the other map, Val? So, that's, so I understand it right. That's gonna be I-1 in the yellow?
Right, so the yellow is the I-1 proposal and the pink-purple is the RR proposal. And there isn't, we did talk to the future owner of the north part and Chuck about when they do build that, they would be responsible for the buffer yards against the, the other uses, so.
What, what are the buffer yards from I-1 to RR?
It'd be forty feet.
Okay. And to the south of the lot that they're, so the I-1 in the yellow to the south, is that, that's still ag?
Right, that isn't being changed from ag. Because it's large enough, you still have, what, sixty, seventy acres, something like that? Yeah.
Okay. So, the renters of that, that unit and the owner, Ray, they know that I-1 is pretty much fair game for anything coming in there. Yep, as, you know, just, just so that's on, on the record that whomever wants to purchase that around that, that lot can put about anything they want in there. Yeah.
Yep. Any other questions? Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Kevin Vakes. I'll be the individual purchasing the north half. Our intent is basically keep the house there. Obviously, we've been talking. Potentially putting storage units in there, oversized storage units is what we're looking at doing, and also my son and I are owner of Vakes Drywall, and possibly looking at putting a shop out there, too, for our drywall business and our equipment, too. So, I don't know. I'm just kind of letting you guys know what's kind of going on there, too, so we're all on the same page, and if you guys have any questions, obviously feel free to reach out and let me know. Any questions?
Val, is that, and this is outside of the purview of the overlay district?
Currently, yes.
I would just say make it nice.
Right.
If there are storage units put up there. Make them visibly nice.
Right.
Since it's outside of our purview of the overlay district, we can't necessarily control what, what goes on there, but.
And we're looking to have an indoor storage and not really any outdoor is what we're looking at right now. Just trying to keep it cleaner that way also. So, you, you know, when you're driving down the highway, you know, you have some nice building to look at instead of just a bunch of stuff sitting out in the fence.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
So, all right, thanks.
Anyone else like to speak on behalf of item number six and/or eight? Or in opposition for that matter? These are all public hearings. Seeing none, I'll close item number six and eight and open it up for discussion. I think those who stated, came up and spoke, did a nice job of explaining the situation.
And you have industrial around the area, too, so, I mean, they obviously know what they're getting into.
I appreciate the future planning specifically for that flag lot for the rural residential.
I'm just gonna comment on your, keep it, keep it nice. I've been a customer of both Arista Ranch and Vakes Drywall. I don't think that's a concern for me.
Okay. Just because it's out of the outside of our purview with the overlay district, there's been some things that have snuck in there prior to our involvement with that, so.
There's no further discussion. I'll make a motion to consider a recommendation of a zoning change from agricultural to light industrial district on property generally located one half mile west of the intersection of sixty-first Street and Highway two seventy-five.
Second.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
I'll also make a motion to consider a recommendation of a zoning change from agricultural to rural residential on property generally located one half mile west of the intersection of sixty-first Street and Highway two seventy-five.
Second. All commission members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
And then consideration of the recommendation of the final plat of Arista Ranch addition. And this, Val, is just the submission of the plat and then the flag lot? That's the?
Yeah, this is just essentially the pretty-upped version of the actual plat of, the color coded that I did before, yeah.
We're good with that? Okay. Make a motion to consider a recommendation of the final plat of Arista Ranch addition.
Second.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
This time, we'll open up the public hearing at the request of Jennifer Wynant to consider a zoning change from agricultural to rural residential on property addressed as thirty-one oh six North Twenty-Fifth Street.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
My name is Craig Corrith with Real Estate Solutions Team, one of the realtors representing Jen Wynant. We were marketing the property for her, and we saw that the most marketable was splitting it from a twenty-acre parcel into two tens, so we worked with Val on doing the lot split requirement to do so. So, we had JEO come out to do a survey, so, long story short, make sure that we surveyed in the flag pole on the west ten acres, so that way they'd still be able to access the east ten acres, not have anything landlocked as a result. Full intention, the only reason we wanted to do the lot split was to be able to get the buyer to be able to afford it. By keeping it as a twenty-acre, it put their debt-to-income ratio too high to where they still have a property in Denver that they're selling. So, in order for them to buy the whole thing, they would not be able to until that property sold in Denver. They have relocated here. She's working at the hospital. So, this would just allow them to be able to buy this property. Once their property in Denver closes, they intend on purchasing the remaining acres on the back, so. And talking with Val, who is extremely helpful through all this, we just wanted to follow whatever rules or requirements we needed to go through and make this process happen, so. Found that it was currently zoned agricultural. In order to do the lot split subdivision, we needed to have it rezoned as rural residential, so we've been working with Brian Benson at JEO to do whatever steps required to make it happen, so. Any questions?
So, Val, the, the, when you said the flag lot, you mentioned, you mentioned the flag lot? Okay, so there's that, okay.
Yes, that comes off of Twenty-Fifth Street there.
Yeah, so that they have public road access, just like we talked about in the, the previous one, so we're not landlocking this back one with just like a driveway easement type thing for them to get to, yeah.
So, and you mentioned once their property sells in Denver, they're gonna purchase the other ten acres?
That is correct.
Okay.
Because currently, the, the rear ten acres or Lot Two per the subdivision, that is just currently in row crop. Their intention is to leave it in row crop, if not, you know, put it to grass for baling, something like that.
Any questions for Mr. Corrith? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any concerns, Val, as, as it stands now?
It was really about the only way we could figure out how to do this, and they were well on their way. I mean, like you said, they've moved from Colorado, so, I mean, this is the way to, to kind of get them to have a legal description in which they can put in a purchase agreement and, and get things finalized. I can bring up.
Is there anything needed in a, in a purchase agreement, like moving forward for that, that second half?
Well, once they have that Lot Two made, then they can do their purchase agreement for Lot Two however they want to. And this is the, the zoning, so this is the piece of property that we're talking about right here. You can see the existing house and that, that back lot that has the flag lot coming up here now.
And where are they in regards? I mean, that's what, a quarter mile, half a mile from our ETJ?
So, they're probably, this would be probably about the half-mile line, because this is Eisenhower, half to three-quarters away from city limits.
And where do we want that necessarily? If, I mean?
Generally speaking, the intent is to be within the last half-mile if at all possible, because as we extend water sewer, these large lots will get a large assessment as it, as it goes by.
There's no other discussion? I'd take a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. I will now close the public hearing and open for discussion.
I'll make a motion to, where are we at here? Consider a recommendation of a zoning change from agricultural to rural residential on property addressed as thirty-one oh six North Twenty-Fifth Street.
Second.
Motion in second, please vote.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Now, the consideration of a recommendation of the Wynant subdivision.
Make a motion to consider a recommendation of the final plat of, or excuse me, make a motion to consider a recommendation of the Wynant subdivision.
Second.
Motion in second.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
And now the consideration of a recommendation of the final plat of M and D addition. Val?
Okay, I will take this one. So, this is out in Stanton County. You'll see Woodland Park over here. These two lots, the, the first one is this square down here, and then this larger lot up here. You see all these hashed marks? I guess those are rows of fruit trees or shrubs or something like that. So, these people would like to split off this part down here, and these want to add that area to their lot. It was an interesting lot because technically this lot doesn't have public road access. They actually come through these people's side lot lines. That doesn't necessarily have to go away, but with this plat, we are providing them actual road right-of-way if needed from up here on the cul-de-sac to get them down here if they ever need that at some point, so we are kind of cleaning that up a bit. And so, those are the reasons that I understand that they're trying to, to do this exchange of acreage.
Can you go back to the, the color page there? When you say the cul-de-sac, that's?
That's up here.
Okay.
It's not platted as a cul, but, or it's not built as a cul, but it appears to be platted as one. They just didn't build out the whole cul-de-sac.
And is that gravel, then, or is that paved south of there?
Once they get off of the road, it appears that Stanton County just allowed them to have a gravel driveway off of there, and you can see where they've paved everybody's driveways around the buildings.
That's probably best for EMS and all of those services as well.
They technically have access beyond just between two side lot lines, yeah.
Instead of cruising through someone's property.
Right.
I don't know how their GPS works, but I can't imagine that that would show up cruising between two people's lot lines.
Yeah, they might get a little confused.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I guess for their, their measures, I'm glad we're cleaning that piece up. Any other concerns with this at all, Val?
No, they have this kind of random rural residential right on the edge of the R-one Woodland Park area, so it, it doesn't matter that they've added a couple acres to their, their lots. They don't have that maximum size like they would in R-one.
And as far as Stanton County goes, is that, do we have to do anything with them as far as, we, we can approve what we approve?
Yeah, this is a, the plat that they would just file at Stanton County, so it's our jurisdiction at this point in time, yeah.
Take a motion?
I'll move to consider the recommendation of the final plat of M and D addition.
Second.
Motion in second, please vote.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Val, the October twenty-twenty-five billing permit report.
Okay, so this is the first month of our new fiscal year, so we're essentially starting back over again. So, October, we had three new single-family detached houses permits come in. We had two this time last year. We did have two single-family attached come in. We had none at this time last year, and we're about two-hundred thousand more than last year in building valuation, so we're pretty much about even.
Sad to see the commercial go away. Thank you, Val. Any other open topics or concerns? Seeing none, I take a motion to adjourn?
So move.
And for whatever in my eye to go away would be ideal.
Still.
Still there. I'm reading, I'm reading with my right eye right now.
Wash your eyes.
Good night.